I stand for tonight's revocation and fudge. Tonight's presentation will be provided by Pastor Dr. Carl Sump, a recent missionary at church.
Thank you for the opportunity, I always appreciate it. Thank you for your outreach to dying pastors, letting us come before you. And I want you to know, I don't just pray occasionally, I pray for you all the time. Let's go to prayer. God in heaven, I thank you so much for the day you've given to us, for the season, Father, for the community that we live in, for the people around us who we love. Thank you, Father God, for the challenge of governance. Thank you for the opportunity to use the minds you've given to us to debate and discuss and maybe disagree, but come to better decisions for our citizens who deserve the best. I thank you, Father God, for these men and women who serve well, Father. I thank you also for all those fellow citizens here, Father, this evening. I pray your blessing. I pray for safety for our kids now that they're back in school. I pray, Father God, for great things to come with the plants on the lakefront, marine on the trails, all the things that this council is doing. I thank you, Father God, that really when we do things according to your will and with your power, we're really doing the Lord's work. So I pray for better things to come even than we have now. I pray for your blessing and for your grace upon this meeting, in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the September 3, 2019, legislature board meeting minutes.
So, sir.
Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
We'll move on to all business, there is none, so we move on to village administrators' report. Greg.
Just a couple of items, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I had a meeting today with Chief Street and the Winter Harbor Fire District to negotiate terms for the upcoming contract for fire services to the unincorporated area, which will come about with a rate change, an increase in rates. We're working on that right now. The other piece I had is that some more good news regarding capital coming into the village. I was contacted by the Department of Commerce and Economic up until yesterday that we've received another $100,000, which we will be applying to the bridge at Third and Holdridge. Is that right, Tim?
Yes, ma'am.
Third and Holdridge, so that since our efforts for the past year, we've brought in $1.3 million of new revenue into the village.
Aye.
But we're moving that bridge project forward immediately, so.
Okay.
The documentation for the brand. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for Greg? All right, move on to mayor's report. I need a motion to approve for the 9/11 memorial by veterans of foreign wars post 7/4/8 at 38th Park. Excuse me. Any discussion in there?
No, the only thing I had was, we're moving another piece there, we're just sure on the literature. I see that the literature stated that it had to be on VFW property, which it is not, but it is village property, but it is given to them. I just want to make sure that we get all that out of the wash before it actually happens. The piece said that it had to be on, from what I got secondhand, I didn't read it myself, I got it secondhand from somebody off of a computer, but the statement that was made by the person that was donating it said that it must be on VFW property and it can never be sold as such, and it must be maintained, and that's not VFW property. It's village property, which we give to them. I just want to make sure everybody's clear that when this all goes down and it's all written up in such a manner that nothing happens to it, so we aren't back in the same position that we are. That's all. I have no offense to it or nothing, I just want to make sure it goes the right way.
Interesting.
So there's no he said, she said, and this isn't right.
Okay. Thank you, trustee. Any questions or any issues with that, Bob?
I don't think so. We've, you know, they have essentially what amounts to a license or release, and we've given them the opportunity to use that land for many years. And have had an excellent working relationship with the VFW over all these years, so I don't see that there's an issue.
Okay, thank you. Right. Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Motion carried. Move on to a proclamation of the annual VFW buddy poppy sales. Whereas the annual sale of buddy poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas VFW buddy poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively by the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widowed and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual sale of buddy poppies by the veteran of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Dr. Michael Bruno, mayor of the Rosewood River Harbor, urge all residents to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of buddy poppies on September 27, 28, and 29, 2019. The day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a buddy poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of their freedoms, which we continue to enjoy as Americans, dated this 17th day of September, 2019. All right. I'll bring one up for you. I don't know if I'll see anybody, but I'll buy one now, or two. Any help?
I picked our machine better for it.
Thank you. All right. So we move on to the third item, Grant Osborne, presentation of an Eagle Scout project and request for approval. Grant, you've got the podium.
Evening, everyone. My name is Grant Osborne. I'm here to add to the foundation of the Eagle Scout project to the board, which hopes of getting it approved. I am an active member and also the senior volunteer in the harbor Eagle Scout troop of Sixteenth and Seven. I propose to Eagle Scout project is that of building a combined pitching slash batting cage that has been proposed to be at the acres. Cage will be set in a predetermined area between the north and middle field baseball grounds at 30 acres. The goal of this project is to bring needed outdoor practice area for the baseball and softball players once they're supervised. Given our Midwest weather, rain and snow, the baseball fields in the spring call, as we all have experienced recently, can be wet and less than safe in case of baseball. These weather conditions limit the ability to practice on the field outdoors. This batting slash pitching age, given its training age and focus on practice, will allow all players of all ages and coaches to safely practice outdoors where in the past it was not a possibility due to ground conditions. Intend to fundraise for this project, so there will be no cost to either the city of Winter Harbor nor the Winter Harbor Parks nor the local city of Harvard. My project goal is to raise $6,000. I hope to commence my project after funds from fundraising donations of time and/or materials supplied or identified and obtained. My goal is to be completed by fall of 2020. So if anyone is interested in donating to this very worthwhile Eagle Scout project if approved, just let me know. Your fund will be put forward toward a very exciting and worthwhile project and definitely will be greatly appreciated by not just me, but also my generation.
Grant, did you present this to the recreation board?
Yes.
And what is this, what cost is going to be?
$6,000.
You have any fundraising plans of what you're going to do?
I will have like night restaurant, any donations from businesses and other.
Service or services.
Services.
Okay. Any questions to Greg?
I think that's beautiful. Long, well needed. These parks had one over there for a long time and we've never had anything.
Very cool. Very good. Thank you, Grant. So we approve. All right. We move on to clerk's correspondence. We move on to new business committee reports, community development. Trustee Hargit.
Tonight, we're just going to present the first reading of the ordinance authorizing regulating the legal marketing of recreational cannabis in Winter Harbor. So I need a motion, just presenting it tonight for the first reading, discussion, and then we'll actually vote on it in the future, but want to continue allowing for public comment. There is a memo in your package, the planning and zoning board had a public hearing last week on this. That was not a discussion on whether or not we should allow recreational cannabis. It went to them for technical advising to look at current zoning and land use and recommend if we were to allow it and what zones should we allow it. And they drafted the ordinance that you have in your packet, it was voted on six to one in favor of sending it on to the board for review and consideration. So what they ended up looking at is the current land use and current zoning, basically saying if we set aside the product, where does, where do the type of cannabis businesses make sense? And again, like we talked about when Greg did his presentation, you know, we're talking dispensaries, onsite consumption, craft grow, cultivation, infusing, right, there's multiple licensed types. And so they looked at our different zoning types, and the ordinance that you have kind of lays out what they would recommend within each of those, with the stipulation that all of them require a special use permit and would have to come to the board for additional review. It also reflects the state statutes that are in the legislation. The biggest example of that being, it can't be located within 1,000 foot feet of a number of different things, libraries, churches, most relevant to our Sheridan Road stretch of parks.
Not churches.
Not churches. Okay. You can locate by a church. So, most relevant to us on the Sheridan Road stretch is parks. So with a park at Fourth Street, a park at Seventh Street, you start to immediately kind of lay out that 1,000-foot radius around it, you know, roughly three blocks. And so we know that even if the zoning allows it, the legislation does not, and you start to kind of identify parcels that would fall in line or not. So there was a lot of discussion at the meeting to get the ordinance to where it is, but wanted to have the first reading today and allow for discussion among the board as well as any additional public comment.
Thank you, trustee Hargit. Any discussion? Any discussion public? Discussion? Yes, Martin, from right up.
I read parts of that proclamation. The $5,000 application fee, is that typical what cities and municipalities are levying for application?
The special use fee, that's what $5,000 is?
Yeah, that's what the $5,000 is. The number, the number came from me, and it's, there's no, there's no requisite anywhere about what we can charge.
Yeah, I just, I just wondered where, how you came to name that figure.
It came, it came because of a whole bunch of lawyers sitting around a room talking about what we thought a reasonable fee would be, given that, that there are a huge range of communities that either don't want it, begrudgingly accept it, or welcome it. And there's no way to know in advance how you're, what a future board that might be considering this would be and how much of a controversy any particular application might have. As a result, you have to, the idea of a user fee or an application fee is to cover the reasonably anticipated expenses of holding that set of hearings. The special use permit process itself will require notifications, and there's a filing fee and all the rest of that to have, we have to publish and that sort of stuff. We also have to pay our planning and zoning board members and village board members, you know, there's staff support that's involved in there too. So that number is an attempt at an approximation of a worst-case scenario where the application is bogged down for some period of time and additional staff work is worked in for it. So it's intended to cover that, that kind of a thing, and that's where that number comes from.
I just wondered if there had been a precedent or if you had access to what other communities are doing.
That's what I just, that's what I tried to say. I'm sorry if I didn't make.
No, no, you did. I was just explaining the reason for my query. I have no personal interest in supplying or anything like that, I was just curious as to where the figure came from, that's all.
It's a very lucrative business that you can get the license.
You know, I mean, for all I'm concerned, it could be $10,000.
How are your baking skills? All right. Very good. Thank you. So move on to finance. Trustee Weiss.
Thank you. I make a motion that we pay a compensable warrant, 2019-9, in the amount of $193,318.36.
Greg. Motion second. All right, any discussion on the warrant? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. We move on to public hearings, who just asked that you provide us with your name and your address.
Quite grinning.
Jane.
In the last two months, I have learned more than I've learned in the 69 years before that.
Wow.
About personal relations, and that comes from three marriages, okay? When you need information, in this day and age, we all grab for the almighty electronic device. One small problem with it, it can be manipulated, it can be twisted, it's written only, there is no voice interaction, there's no emotion to it. Let's try when we have a situation where we want information from someone, go to them face to face, it takes five minutes. You can test back and forth for two hours and still haven't got the idea what's going on, where if you spent two minutes talking to someone face to face, like Richard and I did in the harpy lot, it was over in a few minutes, it could have taken us all day. All I'm saying is, maybe we should try a little personal time, one-on-one, can create and eliminate lots of problems. You know who said what, if they said it to their face, back and forth, and go on the pod.
Thank you.
That's my motto, go, you see all, Winter Harbor, you should go, go on the pod.
Okay. Thank you, Jane. Anyone else? Okay, so we move on to unfinished business. I'll sit down with trustee Whitmore.
Yes, so this Friday night will be our gym night for anyone ages pre-teen, of course, grade, and that's $5 admission. And then we've got our annual touch of trucks this Saturday from one of the trees, it's a free event. We have everything from military equipment to Flight for Life, we've got tow trucks and heavy equipment, we also have the ice cream man coming, and junkie houses and all sorts of stuff for kids. And then we do have the new kids fitness class that will begin on Tuesday, September 24th, and that is for our four to 12-year-olds.
Do you have room for all this stuff?
Somewhere, yes.
If it doesn't rain again, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, we might go on both parking lots because of the rain, but yeah, we have a lot of trucks coming, so that here will be really, really fun.
Thank you, trustee Whitmore. Trustee McCarthy, just thank you to Superintendent Neergaarder and Public Works for the work they've been having to do with the flooding and for the updates. It's just tough, I mean, I drove by, I didn't have any idea, I drove by before I heard from anybody, and it was, I mean, it's just a massive, see what was going on there, so hopefully we can find ways to prevent that situation, but I know it's, obviously there's no easy, easy solution to any of it, especially dealing with Mother Nature, so just I appreciate all their hard work and everything. And enjoyed the farmers market, almost had a few moves there, but it was great to see, you know, people coming and going, and, you know, my family got a few things, so it's a great addition to the community. That's it. Thank you, trustee McCarthy. Trustee Hargit.
Yeah, thank you to Tim and his crew, and I saw, you know, the different CSOs and folks out there directing traffic too. That was like hurricane-like rain volumes. By no means just us, the police department were phenomenal with us. Yeah, but I, I mean, and that's, the staff worked so well together, and so thank you all for that effort. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee McCarthy. Trustee Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Tim, for the hard work, the CSOs and the police department. I drove Thursday all the way down the lake block, remember, roadblocks? I mean, there was all kinds of catastrophic events happening at that time, so. I did talk to an engineer about that pond when I was first being on the board, also on 12 years up and on. I said, what do you do when you get 125-year rain? He says, wow, you know, we use the best numbers that we can at the time and engineer it, but this is what happens when you have that problem. Now we try to fix it again. Greg, thank you again for bringing in some more money again for the, some 12 years that I've been on this board up and on. I've never seen the infusion of money like we've had, this is the first time ever to get that amount of money, to have the Springfield people, the House and the Senate and the DNR come up here to take a look at Winter Harbor. That's never happened in the time that I've been on the board. So thank you for starting that off, two years as a consultant, now as administrator, and bringing the mayor and Pat and, you know, taking them down to Springfield every once in a while to meet all the people down there, so it's really come to fruition, and I've read that it was well needed.
It's fun going to Springfield, I put my chauffeur's hat on, and they're in the backseat.
That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Weiss. Trustee Levin. You have enough. Trustee Marabella.
So, yeah, I have a bunch of stuff, so we'll need to do a little bit. First of all, Greg Jackson was also at the water thing, he called me right away, so it was, it was an effort of him, the police department, and our public works. If you ever want to see flooding, come to my road, it happens all the time, but nobody seems to worry about it because I live way out on the outside of town. I thought it was going to flood. It's been flooded for years, and the roads have been bad, and it's been really bad. So we've actually, not we, but Tim has put a list together for our village administrator of the areas that we deem most important, that we are going to have to take a look at because it is bad. It's been bad out in our area for years, we just have ditches, but it washes over the ditches. The water runs from Lewis into our, our area, you know, it's water that comes from the township that comes to us. But there's a lot of places, so we have a list going that we're going to look into and we're going to dig deeper into it. So I thank everybody for that. I think our guys, everybody worked together well and did a great job to handle that situation. So as I reported last week, our 2019 row project, we think it's about 90% complete. Tim's thinking, he's waiting on a few catch basins, which he saved money, it costs us more time, but saved us a lot of money that we're going to put towards patching. The patches will begin right after that road is done, which is supposed to be next week. The 2019 tree planting schedule will be done by the first week of October. We were planting 40 trees, and the sites have already been predetermined, so they'll be out there taking care of all that stuff. We have two valve replacements that are going to take place on Seventh and Sheridan and Seventh and Raveen. Two are older valves in the town. They affect the business district, so he's going to, they're going to be noticed, and it's going to be shut off for a short period of time, but everybody will have a notice and they'll go forward with that. I mean, it's, it's a process to take care of. Our brush pickup begins in October. I've seen a lot of branches out, people are a little premature, but we will be out to get the branches in October. We run all of October, but only October.
Mondays in October.
Yes.
Not all of October.
Yeah, well, only Mondays. Sometimes we run over on Tuesdays, there's too many. But we do make exceptions if there are bad storms, we try not to, but if there's a really bad storm towards before winter, we can do something, but after that, we're pretty much, our hands are tied. I know fall balls start, and I shoot kids out, I shoot kids out tonight, so just be careful on the roads. Don't want to see anybody getting hurt, so try to drive carefully. It's getting darker earlier, so we just got to watch out for our children and people in the streets. And I don't have anything else, if you don't want to talk to that, nobody seems to have any questions, so. Yes, we did have bad flooding, but I think we handled it really well. Like Fred said, it's been years since we've had that much rain. It's hard to absorb that much rain, I mean, it's just, it is, it is what it is. When they built that school over there, you know, I like that song, they paved paradise and put up a park on it, that was our woods, we rode one across the night. They paved that. Well, they tried to put it, an area to the north of that, and then they tried to route it to the pond in the park, but the pipe was not big enough. So basically, that's what happened with that. The retention pond for COVID is fine, but when you added all that other space that used to be swamped and take that area in, I wasn't part of all that, but that's, that's basically what happened. So we're going to look into that, there's several other places. And then also Greg digging up that grant to fix that bridge over there, which is really nice, that, that bridge is decrepit and it needs fixing, so.
I have a question. The only thing left, according to your report, was land in the asphalt.
Yes.
The, the final surface of asphalt, these newly done land in the ton blocks there, they were delayed, like Robbie said, because of the catch bases. It was like $36,000, and we got all of them done for $12, so it's like $20.
I was going to ask that.
Put that into a patch. So it, it cost us a couple weeks in time, but I think in the, in the long run, it's definitely better for us.
Greg.
Thank you.
I need to have a few things, I'd like to also thank Public Works for, and Greg and Pat, I know Pat was out there too.
Yeah, I forgot about you.
For it. And Pat, Greg was over on Roberts and I think James, among other places, but guys did a phenomenal job. I mean, I was going to work down Kenosha and down Green Bay Road, and I saw water, I'd never seen water before. People's lots, property, I've never seen water in those locations, I don't know what happened. I know we got 10 inches of rain.
We got a lot of rain.
We didn't get it all on Thursday night into Friday, we got six and a half, according to my neighbor with his rain gauge, but three and a half the previous rain before that.
Correct. And officially, you know, it wasn't a 100-year storm, we throw that term out a lot, and I do as well. The last 100-year storm we got was in 2017, but over the last three years, you know, just most recently, you know, I've provided a report for you guys on these same areas that flood.
Right.
You know, coming out of the pond, I mean, that's something that has to be looked at, the pond from the park, you know, that, when that overflows, it's designed to go down Caddam.
Right.
But I think we need to look at, these 100-year storms are starting to come quite recently, you know. 2008, 13, and 17 were supposedly the last 100-year storms, according to stormwater management. But we're getting a lot of heavy rains that are causing these problems. Obviously, it's not just locally in Winter Harbor, and the entire county was flooded. But we have our own issues we have to look at, you know, and we got to be careful of putting the water in the storm sewer because it all leads to our creeks, and then creeks lead to Lake Michigan, so. There are already overflowing, as you can see, and the areas we have to close are mostly creeks that overflow the road, so they're already at their capacity. So to add more water to that is just going to cause bigger problems, maybe not for the residents on Caddam, but maybe the residents further down the line. But it's just something we have to look at, we can't ignore it, you know, and this is what we've talked about for a couple years.
I'd like to have Tim and Greg talk to the engineer and see what we can do.
We, we got a lot of rain.
Um, we didn't get it all on Thursday night into Friday. We got six and a half, according to my neighbor with his rain gauge, but three and a half the previous rain before that.
And officially, you know, it wasn't a hundred-year storm when we throw that term out a lot, and I do as well. The last hundred-year storm we got was in two thousand seventeen, but over the last three years, you know, just most recently, you know, I provided a report for you guys on these same areas that flood.
Right.
You know, um, coming out of the pond, I mean, that's something that has to be looked at, the pond from the park, you know, that when that overflows, it's designed to go down cabin.
Right.
But I think we need to look at these hundred-year storms are starting to come quite recently. You know, two thousand eight, thirteen and seventeen were supposedly the last hundred-year storms according to Stormwater Management. But we're getting a lot of heavy rains that are causing these problems. Obviously, it's not just locally in Winter Harbor and the entire county was, was flooded. But we, we have our own issues we have to, to look at, you know? We got to be careful of putting the water in the storm sewer because it all leads to our creeks and then creeks lead to Lake Michigan. So they're already overflowing, as you can see, and the, the areas we had to close are mostly creeks that, that overflow the road. So they're already at their capacity. So to add more water to that is just going to cause bigger problems, maybe not for the residents on cabin, but maybe the residents further down the line. But it's just something we, we have to look at. We can't ignore it. You know, and this is what we've talked about for a couple of years.
I'd like to have Tim and Greg, uh, talk to the engineer.
Mm-hmm.
And see what we can do.
We have a meeting set up. You know, there's a lot of possibilities, you know, increase the size of the storm sewer, can the, can the creeks take it? Increase the size of our pond, add a secondary retention pond in the park. You know, there's a lot, and these are just guesses on my part of what, what can be done.
Right.
To take on more water before sending it down and, and send it down cabin in more of a controlled atmosphere, you know, or controlled way. Because right now, when that, when that pond overflows in, into the pipe, it's just too much for cabin to handle. And in this storm, the actual pond overflowed and it went as far as cabin and Seventh Street. That's why we had to close the walking path for the kids walking to school. Seventh Street and Sixth Street were both closed. And it was pretty deep, you know? It was, it was bad. It wasn't good, but this is, you know, something we can't ignore.
Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
On Tuesday, September tenth, uh, I was invited and attended the PTL Back to School Bash at Westfield School. Uh, it was an excellent event. I met and talked to very many families and, uh, many friends, and I was very happy that I sponsored this event. I attended the planning and zoning board meeting on that night as well. Just want to say that they talked about cannabis. It was a very informative, good dialogue. Uh, it's a great board. Uh, they discussed between each other very civilly and, uh, it was a very strong board and I was very impressed with that meeting. And, uh, Thursday the twelfth, we had a meeting with advanced disposal, uh, for the landfill contract. It was a very positive meeting. Uh, we presented our thoughts and goals and they presented their thoughts and goals. Uh, only downside was we are, we're outnumbered by attorneys in the room and that usually isn't a good thing. I hadn't put that in there. Uh, advanced disposal, they left with a better understanding of our position and we left with a better understanding of their position. We'll meet again in October. Uh, participated in the community character walk and sign, great event, and it was good exercise too. On Thursday, I attended the mayor's luncheon and some of the stuff I brought up at that was, first, I thanked Lorna Yates for putting this event together and Michael Pelbicki and the rest of the chamber board for having this event. Uh, we, I commented on the regional Lake County, uh, Lakefront Economic Development Group meetings, the regional bike trail plan, development of a trail along Lake Michigan that can be marketed as a unique trail experience. Spring Bluff Nature Watching Tower, uh, open and being marketed on the Lake County Forest Preserve Bird Watching Site. And, uh, working closely with the IDNR, uh, pressing for ongoing maintenance and improvement of public spaces like North Point Beach, as well as pushing for an issuance of an RFP for the construction of a hotel at the marina. IDNR Director Colleen Callahan came and toured our village and the region, and listened to the concerns of our municipalities and are working with us to move our initiatives forward. Uh, thanks Senator Bush, Melinda Bush and Senator, uh, State Representative Joyce Mason, who were present at the luncheon, uh, for their help locally and on our trips to Springfield. And one of the things, other things I talked about was relaunched, uh, Explore With TheHarbor.com with a new special events calendar, intended to promote events happening between Memorial and Labor Day, as well as year-round events that have the ability to draw in visitors. The Chamber Seventh Street Music Series, very well-attended and a great event. And, uh, district along Sheridan Road, uh, the creation of the Enterprise Zone and Winter Harbor Seventh Street Farmers Market. As a matter of fact, Saturday, we had the, it's not going to be the last one, I don't think. Uh, I've asked about October because they were talking about having pumpkins, corn stalks, squash and some other produce. But the Farmers Market on Saturday had, I was there from three to seven, had approximately two hundred and ten residents and non-residents attend this week's market. It was amazing. I couldn't get the signs out by three o'clock. I was putting signs out about twenty, two forty, two thirty, two forty. There was already five or six cars in the parking lot, so. Everyone very happy with the turnout and the farmers want this to be an every-week market next year. Uh, left the market to check out what happened down at the marina. I was at the market and all of a sudden, two police cars literally were doing, you know, zipping down and ambulance followed them. So I thought, I'm going to go down and check this out. So I got down there, I found them over by C dock, over by Atropix, and I didn't want to get involved. I just got out of my car, walked over, I stood pretty far away, probably from here to the window out there. And then, uh, one of the North Point employees came over to me and, uh, I asked him what happened. And he said, uh, a guy literally just passed out or just, you know, just collapsed on, on the dock. And somebody on the, one of the other boulders had the wear with all the start, uh, compressions and, uh, somebody else called nine-one-one. And by the time the Winter Harbor Fire Department got down there, they had a pulse. And, uh, I just want everyone to know, you got to learn CPR. It's so important. And Boy Scout, absolutely. You got to learn CPR. Uh, I talked to an officer last night at our special place pension fund meeting who I saw down there and he said the guy is doing really, really well. Would you agree, Justin?
Yeah, it sounds like he's waiting for open air surgery, but we got the system worked like it's supposed to, so.
Yes. It was very impressive. I was very impressed. Uh, I've never seen firefighters or police in action like they did that day. Uh, they were adrenaline to the hills. I mean, they were running and, you know, back and forth. It was amazing. It was very impressive to watch. And I want to talk to Mark Stevens on Thursday. I'd like to, uh, recognize, if they want to be recognized, the boulder that saved this guy's life, so. I'd like to recognize them.
We're also, Mr. Mayor, we're also going to bring, uh, it, it can't, it can't be understated what the firefighters did on that scene as well as you, as you pointed out, but, uh, to turn around and get a pulse, but to turn around and bring, bring the, uh, the victim back to the point where he was removing, um, innovation tubes himself and talking by the time he got into the hospital.
Right.
Says, uh, says quite a, quite a bit about what our, our department does every single day to make sure, uh, property and life.
It was amazing.
So we're going to bring forward those people for recognition as well, Mr. Mayor.
There was people coming off that dock crying and I was, and it was very moving because they knew that that person, I didn't know until I talked to the officer last night that he was, uh, doing much better and so. But, uh, I also would like to wish Attorney Long a safe and relaxed vacation.
Thanks, Doug.